All right. I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday. What do I have in front of me?
It's February 16th.
It's February 16th. I have the wrong agenda in front of me. This is nice. Okay.
Do you need one?
First, first agenda item tonight is roll call. That I think I could figure out myself.
Good guess. Miller? Miller? Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley? Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
I have 12 out of 14.
Okay. That gives us the necessary quorum to conduct business tonight. Next up on the agenda tonight is reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for recording tonight so that this can get on VATV to be rebroadcast. Third thing on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes for February 2nd, 2021. Does anybody have any comments, corrections for that? Okay. Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So, move clear.
Motion to approve the minutes, Knop. Second, Uer.
Motion by Knop, second by Uer.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley? Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
And Beck?
Aye.
Motion carried, 12 to 0.
Okay. Thank you. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Nothing tonight? Okay. Next up will be matters from the public. Do we have anybody waving their hand? I don't see anybody in here. It's weird to be actually in a room with other people.
Right? No, we do not.
Okay. Then we'll move right on to item number six, which is Resolution 20-13-R. I dot resolution for construction on a state highway. And that would be mine. Let's see if I can open this. Do we have somebody from, is Gary here or?
Yes.
Yeah, I am. I can jump in if.
Chime in. That would be great, Gary.
This is a resolution that I dot is requiring us to execute. It is for, hello?
Go ahead.
Okay. It is for work which is above more of an emergent nature within I dot right of way. So, this is not for work where we would go through a formal permit process. This is for things like water main breaks or pavement patching, something that needs to be done more urgently. And by passing this resolution, we do not have to post a performance bond with I dot. Apparently, this is something that we will now be doing every two years. And we didn't have any problem with the format, so we are recommending that the resolution be approved, 21-013. And the verbiage in this resolution is what's required by I dot.
Okay. Did we ever have to post bond with them before for doing work in the roadway?
You know, I researched, going back into the archives, I can't find where this has been done for 10-plus years.
Okay.
Honestly, I'm not even sure if this was ever done. And no, to answer your question, we don't post bonds with I dot.
Okay. And anything that we can do that makes it easier for us to get out there and do work and not have to wait for anything from I dot would be great.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with this resolution. It's pretty straightforward, so.
It seems just like a simpler way to do this. Does anybody have any questions? Not, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 20-13-R. I dot resolution for construction on state highways.
Second, Rosado.
Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley absent. Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller absent. Rosado?
I'm here now.
Oh, good, Miller. What's your vote?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Baron?
Aye.
Motion carried, 13 to 0.
All right. Next up would be a discussion on the Shumway Water Booster Station and Electrical Substation. You want to start this off or?
Sure thing. So, the city has a couple of important utility structures that are located on South Shumway Avenue. And one of those is an electric booster station. And then another is a pump that is located within the brick building that formerly was the Esda Building there. But inside of there is a pump that is for our freshwater system to carry it from the west side over to the east side residence. And a question arose, been asked by a couple of aldermen about whether those utilities have to be located there or whether they could possibly be moved to another location and what that would entail. And the reason why the question arose is, you know, we've been talking about development opportunities in the downtown, and those two utilities are located right on the bank of the river. And certainly, that is an area that developers would definitely eye for probably some residential or mixed-use development. But I invited Gary Holm to prepare a memo for all of you regarding the status and just the background of those utilities. And then we can, you know, have a discussion about what it would take if, in fact, the city decided that they wanted to move those to a different location for development. So, with that, I think I'd like to turn it over to Gary Holm to provide just a brief overview of the information that he presented in his memo.
Thanks, Laura. The electric substation is, we have several electric substations. This one is known as our main sub. That's just what the guys call it, is the main sub. And one of the reasons for that nickname is the fact that all of the 34 KB feeders come into this sub, which makes it unique. It services both the west and the east side from its central location in the downtown. And again, it kind of serves as a center feeder point for the electric system. All those lines, not all those lines, some of those lines were brought into the substation back as part of the 2006, 2007 crosstown project, which also included the crosstown water main project. It was all, all that work was done at the same time. The water main project ran essentially from the treatment plant, you know, down to the booster, Shumway Booster Station, which is in the old Esda Building. And then from the booster station, water is pumped back uphill to serve the east side of town. With topography for different elevations throughout town, it's not uncommon, it's pretty common with water systems to have pumps in order to equalize pressures and enable that no one has a low-pressure area. And we also have pressure-reducing valves so that nobody has too high a pressure. So, both the water and electric were essentially upgraded in 2006, 2007 with the crosstown project. And we did look at relocating the substation conceptually, almost even probably a decade ago. At that time, the cost to relocate it was in a $5 to $7 million range. And we had never really looked at relocating the water, but I just kind of threw a number at it that probably at least $2 million to relocate the booster station somewhere in close proximity. And when I said that, I said in my mind, I said probably down to the treatment plant someplace. But in general, I would, I would say it's far out of range in that close to $10 million to relocate those two utilities collectively. I would think that's not, not too far off. That's all I have.
Okay. So, I guess, you know, I don't know if the aldermen that had the questions about this have anything or any comments about this. There have been several discussions over the time that I've been on city council about that. One of the things we had talked about, I believe when we did the crosstown water main or, you know, the 2007, '06, '07 era, when we did that work, that we'd even talked about what it would take to move that pump or have that pump in a different place. And I think because of the, the area that it's in and just like even to get it across the river was a problem without the pump being on this side of the river. So, you know, it, yeah, I'm sure it could be relocated, but where would we put it and how much money do we want to spend doing it? That's, that's still, to me, really the big question is the amount of money. And unfortunately, I think what had happened probably was the, the city originally had the city hall and the fire station right, you know, virtually next to these two, two pieces of property. And probably this was the easiest way to locate that was right next door. So, you know, I know there was a lot more in the electric substation originally, probably, you know, 15, 20 years ago. And that's really been cut down quite a bit. Now, it's still right in the middle of, you know, to me, another development area. So, you know, to, to get rid of that would be extremely expensive. I'd like to, to think about maybe doing something more creative with it, where, you know, possibly create, you know, another banjil or something that actually faced the river to be able to utilize the island out there and then have the performance be on, above, you know, built in a building with a deck on it or something that you could use that. I mean, I know that there's lots of ways to hide stuff. You know, I think of Navy Pier and how, you know, you got giant pumping station and everything else that's right next door to that, but you really never notice that. You know, there's lots of ways to do things around those without having to spend the millions to remove them and put them somewhere else. So, you know, I don't know what, what the reality would be, you know, if that was in a TIF district and how we'd be able to, to utilize that. Again, any kind of structure that could create enough money to afford to be able to move these is going to be huge. You know, even in a 23-year TIF, you got to have a giant, you know, project to create enough money even to come up with, say we needed $10 million to move the two of those. You know, that, that's four-story building minimum, probably, to be able to do that. So, it's probably something that we need to think creatively about or have some more discussions about. But, you know, anything is doable, just given enough time and enough money. Does anybody have any comments?
Alderman Wolf, this is Alderman Miller.
Go ahead, Keenan.
I, I had asked the question about, because apparently we have heard that someone had approached us with an idea for that substation and for the water, Esda Building. So, I wanted to hear what that was, because like you said, there, there are many ways that we can, if, if those things need to stay there, then that's what it is. But if someone wants to build a building there and can incorporate our substation in it to still give us access to it, I think I would like to hear that idea. Or at least if someone approaches us, tell them that and then see what they come back with if they even want to pursue that. That was what I wanted to hear, was what, what was the idea that was presented to the city so that we can, like you said, we can be creative? And if someone really wants to develop that part of the, of the river, then we should hear that and help facilitate that.
And there is currently no one who is proposing to do something on the site of those utilities. We have heard the beginnings of proposals for things that might happen on adjacent pieces of property, but nothing that would, not a project that would necessitate removal of those structures. Like Alderman Wolf was saying, maybe we could find some creative way to make them look nicer adjacent to a development. But the development proposal at this time is not really, at this point, feasible yet. So, it's really just in the beginning stages of talks about what it might be.
And Gary, would there be any chance in the future that we would be reconfiguring our electric utility or having the possibility of rebuilding some of those feeder lines or anything that would allow us to move them at that time, to move that substation? Or split it up and put it in different places?
That's not really contemplated right now. In fact, we're, we're contemplating rebuilding one of the feeder lines out to Paramount to connect between main sub and out, out to Paramount. Part of the discussions a few years ago, well, it's been more than a few years now, was within the context of Mooseheart. And if you recall, we're going to end up serving Mooseheart one day with electric, the incorporated portions at least. And that, that was the context in which we talked about, you know, how do we relocate main sub and serve Mooseheart at the same time? We actually contemplated a, a property down in the industrial park off of Bond and putting the substation down there, basically having to rebuild all the feeders down to that location as opposed to the downtown. But no, there's no, there's no like long-term capital plan to relocate the sub out of downtown.
And that's maybe what I'm thinking of was when, when we annexed the Mooseheart properties, that there was talk of having a southern substation down there and the possibility of taking some of the load and some of the setup out of downtown to move it down there. And maybe that's what I'm remembering that we had discussed on that. Because I think that that would be the natural thing, would be to think about that, you know, to plan that out into normal work that we would be doing to, you know, not make that a one-time, just, hey, we're going to move this because we want to move it. But if it made sense to what we reconfigured something or, you know, set up another substation and actually split this one up, then that might be a better way to do that and more economical way to do that at that same time.
Hey, Alan?
Yes?
Question, question for you, Gary. What is the footprint of the pump within that structure? Is it, does it take up a majority of it? Is it in the corner? You know, could a smaller structure be built around it if, just for aesthetics purposes? Not that your building there isn't lovely, but just if the need ever arose to have more sightline to the river for something, would that be a possibility? And if that storage wasn't needed anymore?
Yes and yes, because as you just identified, there's storage in there. So, if the storage needs went away, then obviously the building could be shrunk to accommodate just the water facility. Again, the building is what it is because it used to be the old Esda Building and it was, history is what before that, was the fire department before that? I can't remember. But that's why the building is what it is. If it wasn't anything related to the water, it wasn't built for the water facilities. We just happen to occupy it now.
Yeah. As I remember, I think that the, one of the things with the way we left the building alone was because they needed access to be able to get in there to service that. If anything goes wrong with those, you can't wait, it has to be done as soon as practical. And they need to have pretty much full access to those giant pumps and pipes that are in there so that they can service it if anything goes wrong with it or just maintenance on it. So.
Yeah. Those of you who, those of you who've toured the water fueling plant, if you remember, there's hatches in the roofs out there to be able to crane to lift out those big pumps. It's the same thing downtown. We, as Alderman Wolf just said, we would just need full access to be able to service the pump.
I don't think we're looking for any action or anything tonight, but I think this is something that we need to, we need to talk about on a regular basis because if we do get to the point where we are going to do some major electrical reconstruction or additions to the, the system that we have, that would be, to me, the right time to do that and plan for that, to try to plan that out. And okay, this one feeder gets split up into two and goes to two different places, whatever has to happen. Because I'm sure that all has to be engineered on the load that's on it and everything else has to be taken into account when you go to do something like that. And as far as the pumping station goes, I think really that's just, can you can find that in a smaller space and realize those pumps are not quiet. You're not going to build housing over the top of that or immediately adjacent to it because it is loud. If you've ever been over there and listened to those when they're really working, they make quite a bit of noise. So, that I think would be an issue with those. I think it's something that we should probably just leave on a, kind of a rotating basis that we'd, you know, talk about where everything is, maybe even with our strategic plan, as we look at redeveloping that quadrant of downtown, that southwest quadrant that we talk about, that, that that has to be part of that plan.
Right. Right. Gary, just for reference, can you catch us up on what is stored there? I know traditionally, we would store the plows in there during the non-winter months.
Yeah. The television trailer goes in there, the confined space trailer goes in there, obviously the plows go in there. Once in a while, electric borrows the space for the fiber trailer to go in there. Those are the gen, most of the things that fit in there on a regular basis.
So, it's pretty full?
During the summer months, it's very full. If those trailers aren't out, I mean, if we don't have a confined space going on or we don't, we're not out televising sewers, all that equipment is in there.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Okay. There's nothing else on that? Then we'll move on to project status.
I'll just go over a couple of things that maybe if people missed the city council meeting yesterday to let folks know that very soon we're going to be publishing, publishing a public service message that Mayor recorded with King County Health Department, Michael Isaacson, their Assistant Director of Community Health, as, as well as Corinne Pirog, King County Board Chair, and Dave Brown, King County Board Member. We're out here and just giving us a status update on the availability of vaccines in the area and especially the challenges that our local health department has faced with regard to that. Also, wanted to remind everybody that Restaurant Week is going to be coming up here in March, and it's going to be for two weeks this year, Sunday through Thursday of the weeks of March 15th and March 22nd. Doing it a little different this year to help out our restaurants. And when you visit Sunday through Thursday, the weeks of March 15th and March 22nd, you'll be able to dine in or carry out and receive 10% off your food order. And then you'll also receive a coupon for 10% that you can use Sunday through Thursday on non-holiday days in the month of April. So, you really get two coupons, whereas in the past, we've just had one coupon. And plus, the greater number of days, we hope, is really going to help out our local restaurants. The other things that I wanted to mention are in community and economic development. You know, on Hawks Drive, we're really proud that we have these two new great senior living facilities. Last year, we had windmill, locking on windmill, the first one, Manor. Windmill Manor came online, which is senior housing for independent living. And right across the street from that now is Windmill Landings, which is a continuum of care. So, they have both independent living, assisted living, and a memory care facility. And in total, 141 units over there. I had an opportunity to tour the facility, and it's just really an excellent, excellent property and a wonderful place for, you know, members of our community who, while they may not want to be in a single-family home anymore, they have the opportunity to continue to live here in Batavia for the rest of their life. And we love when, when properties like that come online. Occupancy is scheduled to begin sometime in March. Also, in information system, wanted to give a shout out to Mike Kamen, who has been elected to the Illinois GIS Association Board of Directors for a two-year term. Mike is kind of one of the unsung heroes around here in GIS. He makes sure that our geographic information system is capturing all of the assets of the city of Batavia. And you don't think about it when you drive by all of those electric poles and fire hydrants and all of the various apparatus throughout our community that are community assets. And Mike is the one who maintains the system for all of that. And a lot of the maps that we see that go along with presentations that members of staff provide to the city council, Mike is the one who generates those maps for us. And for all of the annexed properties that we have been talking about over the past few years, Mike makes sure that those properties get added to the city map and does the information to the various agencies that need to know about change of address up to and including the US Postal Service. So, we thank Mike for his role in the organization. And that is it, except to say that when we were here last night, you know, I, we gave a shout out, much appreciation and thanks to all of our employees who have to work outside in this cold weather. And yesterday was one of those nights. You know, while we were here, I could hear the plows rolling by and I could hear them throughout the night. And one of the questions that came up last night is, you know, knowing how, how many hours that our Public Works employees have been working trying to keep up with this winter weather, the question came up about where things are at in terms of our use of salt and then also overtime for our winter operations. We will use 100% of our budgeted amount for the purchase of salt this year for our winter operations at the beginning of the year. So, you know, some years when we don't go through our complete supply, our budgeted amount also allows us for the purchase of replenishment to our supply. That is not the case this year, that we are going to run through the $227,000 that was budgeted for salt early on. And so, it will, we're going to keep tabs on what the prices are. The prices right now on salt are actually very good, at $46 per ton. And so, the question is whether we would anticipate a rise in those costs so that it would be better to purchase it in the current year to replenish our supply this year or whether we feel that, you know, we can put it into the 2022 budget to purchase next year. So, that's salt. As far as overtime for winter operations go, year-to-date, we are at $110,600. At this point last year, we were at $58,000. So, this year, we have more, almost double the amount for overtime and double time for our winter operations. So, you know, it's going to be universal and not just for locally or in the state, but for a wide swath of America are experiencing exactly the same issues that we are with these costs. But we do not anticipate that overall, that it is going to have an impact on our budget that we wouldn't be able to somehow make adjustments for in terms of our expected balance for the year. Gary, you're on the line. Would you like to add anything to what I've said about overtime winter operations?
No. Thank you very much. You covered it, all the information that we needed. Thanks.
And do the aldermen have any questions about the project status or the winter operations information?
I have a question.
I, I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Serone.
Yeah, just based on that information, I was curious since there's, I don't think there's a salt futures market. How do you make the decision of when, when to replenish based on, on market pricing and, and plans for the future, thoughts on the future pricing?
Um, Bill Kellam and Scott Haynes combined fifty-five years of experience is what I'm gonna, of what I'm gonna rely on.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm not questioning it. I just was curious it's, how they go about it. This will be a different year. I, I don't know if nationwide, there's going to be a, after the winter, a rush to replenish, but it'll be interesting.
It will be interesting, for sure.
I think what's happened is over the past probably five or ten years, it's actually gone the opposite way. I think that there's a lot of places that had huge, huge stores and didn't use a ton of it. Because one of the things I think has happened is I think the way we've treated the streets and the way we've salted the streets has changed over the years. So I think that that maybe is one of the reasons why it's driven the prices down.
That's an excellent point.
And so I'm sure that they've been through these cycles before and they know, hey, they get a call from somebody that says, hey, we got, you know, fifty tons that's available. Do you want it now or do you want to try and guess and wait till, you know, September to get more?
That's right.
So I'm sure that they, they can handle that. And then if there is some need for a budget amendment or something to change, they'll come back to us. Because we've been in that situation before where we didn't have enough salt.
Right.
Where we used it all pretty much before the January, February time and then had to figure out where to get it.
Right.
And that was not a good position.
No.
Okay. Um, do we have any others this evening? Okay, hearing none. Then we will move into executive session for purchase and sale of real estate. And because we are a virtual meeting tonight, this meeting will end. There will be no action after that, so we will adjourn this meeting. Actually, we will enter executive session, which will adjourn this meeting tonight. I have a motion for executive session.
So who?
Don't move. Miller?
Okay, motion by Miller. Who was the second?
Serone.
Serone, okay. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Behring?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley, absent. Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
And McFadden?
Aye.
Motion carried, thirteen to zero.
Okay. And now we'll end, end this meeting. So Howard, if you want to end this meeting?